I'll call the May 12th study session Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, we start off with current business. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Maldoun?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
None.
Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
None.
And Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
None, thank you.
And I have none. So we'll move on to our presentations this afternoon. The first one is a presentation recognizing Lupus Awareness Month. Is Bridget Whit here? If you want to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor Salick, councilmembers. I truly appreciate you proclaiming May as Lupus Awareness Month. I personally was diagnosed with lupus over 28 years ago when I was 17. I'm giving my age away. But anyways, it immediately started attacking my kidneys. Lupus is an autoimmune disease that it's basically like being allergic to yourself, where your immune system attacks healthy tissue in your body. By the age of 19, I was critically ill, clinging to life. I've had years, three years of chemotherapy, hips replaced, and then a kidney transplant nine years ago. It has created a fire in my belly to be a voice for lupus. I do travel to DC and Sacramento, and I'm an inspiration to other patients to see that you can live with this disease even after being as sick as I was. Currently, there's over one and a half million Americans with lupus. Ninety percent are women. It is barely studied in medical schools, so there are doctors out there that don't even know or understand about this disease. So there are a lot of patients that are going undiagnosed or underdiagnosed. Some of the symptoms for lupus are joint pain, fatigue, hair loss, skin lesions. They have a classic butterfly rash on the face which spans across your face. So I do again thank you for proclaiming May as Lupus Awareness Month. It's very important that we get the word out there. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read a proclamation. If you'll stay there, we'll do a photograph after I get done reading it. And this is a proclamation, the city of Newport Beach. Whereas systemic systematic lupus erythematosis, commonly known as lupus, is an acute chronic complex and often life-threatening autoimmune disease. And whereas tens of thousands of Southern Californians and more than one and a half million people nationwide are affected with lupus or related diseases. And whereas lupus primarily strikes women in their prime, affecting all aspects of their lives, family, friendships, education, and careers. And whereas women of color develop lupus at a rate two to three times the rate that Conchadians develop lupus. And whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to symptoms of other illnesses. And whereas early diagnosis and proper treatments are critical to the improvement of the quality of life and survival rate of people with lupus. And whereas increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Lupus Awareness Month in the city of Newport Beach and further congratulate the Lupus Research Institute and Lupus LA on its important work, furthering critical research, serving lupus sufferers, and educating the public on the devastating impacts of this disease. And witness thereof, I've set my hand and sealed on the city of Newport Beach. Okay, our second proclamation is recognizing Poppy Month. Is Rachel Heidemann here, please? Want to come forward?
Today we have our new Miss Poppy and our Miss Junior Poppy. This is Taylor and her younger sister. Taylor today will be reciting the poppy poem, and her younger sister will be handing out a poppy to each and every one of you along with the remembrance card. So here's Taylor.
Okay.
"In Flanders Fields" by John Wickrey. In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row and row, That mark our place, And in the sky, the larks, still bravely singing, fly, Scarcely heard amid the guns blow. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe To you from failing hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, Though poppies grow in Flanders Fields.
Thank you. You know, that was very moving. This is, we just recently just passed, I think, the 70th anniversary of VE Day, and something for all of us to remember for all of the sacrifices that were made during World War II, that we can all live in freedom and peace and harmony in the United States today. And I'd like to read this proclamation from the city of Newport Beach. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And whereas the nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice in lives in all wars. And whereas the American Legion has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Poppy Month and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial property. And witness whereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed this 12th day of May 2015. Rachel, I just came back from my vacation in Belgium, and it was not far from where Flanders Field actually is. And there were many wreaths, because this is the 100th anniversary of World War I and many of the activities going on there. And there were many wreaths with the red poppies throughout England, France, and Belgium this last week. And I thought of you and the poem for all the time that you've come before to recite it in the past, so thank you. And I need to emphasize that it's the American Legion Auxiliary. I'm not sure exactly what I said there, but it is the American Legion Auxiliary. And again, World War II was a significant event in the history of our country and something that we should never forget. Okay, our next presentation is recognizing Building Safety Month. Simone Georges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Simone Georges, I'm the chief building official for the city. We want to recognize May as Building Safety Month, is really to bring public awareness to building safety. Building safety involves frankly, building structures to meet today's current code requirements. Anything from the home you live in, to the office you work in, to these council chambers involves building safety. It involves the city staff reviewing your design plans to ensure that it meets the current code requirements. We have a professional team of staff that does the review. We have a professional inspection staff that goes out to ensure that what was designed is actually built. We could all remember and the unfortunate tragedy of Nepal, of the great earthquake just recent, the complete devastation there. We've had similar damage because of the Northridge earthquake, the Whittier earthquake. Building safety ensures that these buildings stay, say, standing and limit the amount of damage they receive during an earthquake. We have building safety through the building division of the community development department for the city. And we have staff to ensure that these buildings are properly built to code. As I said, anything from earthquake safety to the electrical system, to making sure that you have smoke detectors in your home. So we want to bring public awareness to building safety. We want to encourage everybody to come to the city, to the community development department, to the permit center, ask questions anytime you want to improve your home, improve your business. So we thank the council for supporting the community development department. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'll read this proclamation, which I think is actually longer than your speech just was. I'm going to work my way through it. Whereas our city of Newport Beach's continuous efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of structures. And whereas those guardians use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the structures where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building, safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public during times of natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, of our local building officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable structures. And whereas resilient communities start with building codes is the theme for Building Safety Month 2015. It encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2015 encourages appropriate steps that everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that councilors' lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year in observation of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, do proclaim the month of May 2015 as Building Safety Month. And in witness whereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed this 12th day of May 2015. Okay, we have one more proclamation. This is recognizing National Public Works Week. Dave Webb? Is your proclamation as long as Simone's?
Dave wants to know why they only get a week and building gets a month.
First, I'd like to dedicate my first three minutes back to Simone. Wow. No, I'd just like to take a quick opportunity to really express the thanks of the citizens who recognize National Public Works Week. Public Works is kind of the foundation of our society, as you know. It runs our roads and our sewer systems and our water systems, landscaping, airports, ports. We have a lot of that infrastructure here. A lot of great work by staff, by consultants that continually keep your transportation systems running. So it's really worth a time to kind of note these people. They kind of work in the silent background. I always like to say that before the fire guys get there, before the police got there, there was a road, there was a well, there was a water system. That support runs our modern society and the things that we run on. So I'd just like to take a moment to thank you for reading the proclamation. Ours is short, by the way, so.
Okay, it does, the font's a lot larger, so it's easier to read. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives and serve as the foundation to a society. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry and elected officials is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, harbors and waterways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this city depend on those facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works and municipal operations managers and staff. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and municipal operation departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th to the 23rd, 2015, is National Public Works Week in the city of Newport Beach. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing and maintaining our public works, and to recognize the contributions which the public works and municipal operations officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of our lives. And witness thereof, I've set my hand here unto and caused the city of, the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed this 12th day of May 2015.
If I could ask our public works and municipal operations managers to come down and join us?
And this is a presentation to the Newport Beach Arts Foundation, and Evelyn Hart, and Allison Riffel, and Susan Melinda Sealy. All right.
We're excited about this, of course. Allison, as you know, is president of Peninsula Point Association, and Susan is at UCI, running a foundation out there. We're very pleased to say that we are the three last members of the foundation, Balboa Peninsula Foundation, for the theater, Balboa Theater. Today, we have a number of people from the Arts Commission here and the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. We have our founding, original founding member, Dana Pettit, is here from the peninsula. We have Marion Burgerson, a longtime supporter of the arts and the theater and the foundation now that the money's going to. That'll be our senator, Marion Burgerson, of course. We are, been on the board now for, as secretary, doesn't know anything about being a secretary, but, and the treasurer, she learned all about being a treasurer, right Allison? And we would, particularly, we wanted to do this here because of the partnership the city of Newport Beach has had with the foundation all these years. And we, of course, wouldn't have been even as far along as we were there for a short while as we are, you know, today, being able to distribute the remaining funds to the Newport Beach Arts.
Commission.
Foundation.
Commission.
And, right. So we would like to do that, and I know, I asked the other board members here if they would say a few things, too.
Just as a longtime resident of Newport Beach, my children are essentially fourth-generation Balboa Island residents and Newport Beach residents. It was really important to me to be involved in this initiative, to get the theater kind of a vital part of our community again. Unfortunately, that's taken a different turn, and we'll see what's to be in its future. But it's also important to me to support the arts in Newport Beach. I think it's really, the public art that we've got going now is a wonderful boon to the city. People are coming from all around to see it. We just have our neighboring Costa Mesa, which is, has great arts opportunities, and I think Newport Beach needs to kind of step up to the plate, to the region, and what we're doing for the arts community. So I'm pleased to be able to present this with my co-foundation members. It's a check of $175,000, by the way. Yes, Allison.
I had no interest in getting involved with the theater, but my neighbor Dana Pettit has had the enthusiasm throughout the years to keep it alive. And so I gladly took on seeking the interest of the Balboa Theater when Don Heck was involved. I really, I liked his concept, and I was intrigued by him. The three, the, I've been, I thoroughly enjoyed working with the two ladies here. Strong integrity, and we've also been able to stop the spending and really save the remainder of the money without spending it on unnecessary items. So I hope that something happens with the building. I know that our residents on the Peninsula Point are really interested in keeping some type of theater or performing arts in the Balboa Village, which would be extremely positive with all the money that's been put into this building and this foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's, don't go away. It's, it's unfortunate that we were not able to complete the dream and the vision we had for the theater, and I want to thank all those that worked so hard for so many years. We went down so many paths and tried to climb so many mountains on it, from the concept to getting the permitting, to trying to get the financing put together. And unfortunately, it didn't work out, and the, you know, the fate of the theater building, if you will, is still yet to be determined. But hopefully, the money that you're passing on to the city now will just be the foundation that we can continue to build our arts and cultural legacy in the city to an even greater degree. So we really do appreciate the fact that the Theater Foundation is making this contribution to the Arts Foundation to help better the arts in our city. And I'd like to come down and have a photo taken with you beautiful ladies.
Woo-hoo, yes, we'd like that, too. The reason we're here is because of that. So I don't know who we're going to present this check to, so somebody from the Arts Found, Newport Beach Arts Foundation, if they would come down, please. Or do we have the president?
We do.
Oh, all right. Would you check this check and make sure it's the right one? Nice to meet you. I have met you before.
Nice to see you.
Oops, what we got? Wait, no, we're not.
Ready? Okay.
May I say one quick word? On behalf of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation, we accept this money very gratefully from the Newport Beach Balboa Performing Arts Theater Foundation. We will be very good stewards of this money because we recognize that it actually belongs to Newport Beach Arts Commission. And we are, in fact, the foundation that receives the money for them. So thank you, ladies, thank you, everyone. I would like to invite also two other young ladies to join us in the photograph. Ms. Lila Crispin, she was our first president, that I'm aware of, for the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. And Marie Morrison, who was the president for a long time, just preceding me going to take the helm of the thing. So anyway, I belong to your organization. I just didn't know you when I belonged. I was president of your organization at one point. Look what I did for you, nothing. All right, so, all right, let's do our pictures.
That's probably as long as Duffy has. I've lived in my own home for 42 years on the Balboa Peninsula Point. I started the theater in 1995, and after 15 years, I got really worn out. So turned it over to Craig Smith and Evelyn Hart and some other people, and they went forward. We've had a real struggle, as you know. I thought when we got the million dollars from the Greens, we had our bulldozer ballet, that everything was going to go. Balboa has suffered greatly over the years, and now that you all have moved over here, we're really down there alone, too. So it's going to be a lot of work for you, Mayor, Councilman Dixon, to really get involved. We had a big advocate with Mike Han. He was a wonderful person. He did a lot for the peninsula, for all of us, and got really involved. And that was a good thing for him. So I'm disappointed that the thing did not work out. I'm happy to be able to give this money to the Arts Commission. I think it's an appropriate move, and I hope to see you all around soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
And thank you. Let me just thank again Evelyn and Allison and Susan and all of you for your many, many years of time, treasure and talent to get to this point. And I don't think it's a loss, it's a gain for the community. Just this morning, meeting with the Balboa Village Merchants Association and the excitement in the community about what this site, this property can mean to Balboa Village, I sense a palpable excitement, momentum that is building to really see a new day for Balboa Village. And I think many of you know my priority or my interest, desire, is to see a community-serving, cultural-serving site in that location. And I'm hearing already some really exciting ideas. So thank you for getting us to this point. A new chapter is now beginning, and you could be sure that I'm going to be there every step of the way. And I don't want you to go away. I want you to continue to support, as you well have, our community. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on then to item number seven. It's the fiscal year 16 operating budget overview. Staff?
So Mr. Mayor and council members, this is the first time your council as a whole will see the proposed budget that I submit to you. This is a great time to give a 30,000-foot look at it and respond to it. And I know both Dan and I can talk a long time about this, so you should feel free to interrupt with questions. I think that's how the Finance Committee did it yesterday, and it's probably better that you do that and you can hone right in on issues that you see are important. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and we'll go through it.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I am pleased to provide an overview.
Your microphone.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I am pleased to provide an overview of the 2015-16 proposed budget. The fundamentals of the budget are financially sound. The budget, sorry, the fundamentals of a financially sound budget have been met. And we believe it appropriately emphasizes the goals and priorities of the council. So on the left is the city's key operating fund. It's the general fund, with proposed expenditures of $178 million and new capital projects of $5.3 million. It remains balanced with relatively conservative revenue estimates. On the right, the overall budget adds in restricted revenue sources. It adds in water and wastewater, utility enterprises and numerous capital projects funds. So due to the incubation time of many capital projects, resources tend to accumulate for several years. Then when the projects mature, it is not uncommon to spend down some of the accumulation. So the $4 million of planned use of fund balance is very normal as capital project expenditures tend to ebb and flow. Newport Beach is an outstanding community to live, work and recreate. The budget is intended to be reflective of our community's goals, policies and priorities. It is our intent that the proposed budget continues to emphasize those qualities that make Newport Beach an exceptional community. We've complied with the charter requirements associated with the budget. After the public hearing on May 26th, the council shall make any budget revisions deemed advisable and adopt the budget on or before June 30th. This slide illustrates the relative importance of our top three revenue sources, which make up 77% of the general fund revenues. Those are property taxes, sales taxes and transient occupancy taxes. Our top three revenue sources are estimated to grow to maintain a growth at a modest When we look at our past 20 years of assessed valuation growth, our growth has remained positive throughout the Great Recession. With an assessed valuation of $44.8 billion, Newport Beach ranks second in Orange County, ahead of much larger cities including Anaheim and Huntington Beach. Our big three in the sales tax category, autos, retail and restaurants, have sustained a modest to moderate growth. If you can read the numbers at the top, we can see that the pace is ranging from 4.3% in the auto category and 7.7% in the restaurants category. And although a much smaller component of the sales tax, business and industry rebounded tremendously spurred by exceptional sales quartered by Jazz, semiconductors and Tangram Now at approximately $20 million per year, our tourism taxes have eclipsed our pre-recession levels that would show of approximately $13 million per year. Local GMs have been pleased with the previous year's results, and they remain bullish for 2015. At the current clip, TOT is likely to outpace both our 14-15 estimates as well as our proposed 15-16 revenue estimates. So we've prepared the budget using four guiding principles that are supported by notable department initiatives. Principle number one is an ongoing organization-wide effort to anticipate and respond to customer needs by providing services better, faster and less expensive. In 2015-16, in addition to those listed on the slide, library services will evaluate media collections that best fit the needs of customers in each library, and to continue to explore emerging digital media. Recreation and senior services will continue to develop a wide variety of recreation and social programs that address the needs of tots, youth and adults. A major focus in the coming year will be the opening and the operation of the new Marina Park facility that you see on the right. Principle two is a continued focus on enhancing the community's quality of life and safety so that, and this budget provides for, a strong but community-friendly public safety presence on the peninsula, where additional officers will work to provide a good visitor and resident experience with many of our eating and drinking establishments. We'll have an additional civilian fraud investigator and more. Principle number three is an ongoing effort to keep our community looking great, protecting our property values and enhancing our quality of life. In the works for the fiscal year 15-16 is the opening of Marina Park, enhanced access to Sunset Ridge Park, synthetic turf at Benita Canyon Park to extend the sports field access, new fire stations, rehabilitations of alleys and the heights, replacing concrete and CDM, various media enhancements and more. Principle four emphasizes our fiscal health and sustainability. We have the financial wherewithal to fund most all of our capital improvement projects in cash. We are making continued progress towards addressing our pension and OPEB liabilities, and we maintain a strong cash position providing flexibility in almost any economic environment. And we are viewed as, we are viewed by our creditors in a very positive light. As you can see, nearly 75% of general fund expenditures, when you include both public safety and public works, that 75% of our general fund budget is spent on keeping, on public safety and keeping the city looking great. Here's just another look at expenditures by function. And another look at our organization by department comparatively from 15 to 16. Here is another look at our general fund expenditures by type. 65% of our general fund budget is associated with personnel. Maintenance and operation continue to grow as services are contracted out. And these two categories together, the 10%, is dedicated to current and future capital improvement projects. I think it's sometimes lost that nearly $30 million of our budget reflects savings for long-term needs like facility replacement, major facility maintenance, vehicle replacement, emergency communications and other costs of doing business. But these are our savings for the future. When we look at staffing, the police department is up five employees, and recreation is staffing up for the opening of Marina Park, while we continue to see some attrition in active downsizing in other departments. Within salary and benefits, the most significant increase reflects council's decision last fall to pay down the unfunded liability on a faster schedule. Salaries have increased 2%, which includes merit increases and three net new employees. There's also employee contributions to the pension system have increased $826,000 to a total of $8.3 million per year. This next slide, this chart illustrates both the city's accelerated payment towards the amortized cost of our unfunded liability. You can see it growing from $12.7 million in 2015 to $21.5 million in 2016, for a total growth of $8.7 million in one year. We also see employee contributions growing from $7.5 million to $8.3 million for a total growth of $826,000. Also important to note that if you look at employee contributions relative to the normal cost of the pension program, employees are paying more than 55% of the current cost of the pension program. And when we look at council's previous action to employ the fresh start, the city saves $129 million over 30 years, and it saves $47 million in today's, $47 million in today's With regard to OPEB, the city is, OPEB is kind of the industry speak for retiring insurance obligations. The city is in much better shape than most cities. The legacy city plan was closed to new participants in 2006. And the new plan is funded by employer and employee contributions into a 401K-type account available only to pay healthcare costs. The employer contributions for each employee only range from between $800 to about $2,500 per employee per year. As far as the legacy plan, there are 691 participants eligible for the legacy benefit. 142 of those are currently employed by the city, and 549 are retired receiving these benefits. So the legacy plan has, still has an unfunded liability of $25 million, but it will be paid off in 13 years. Unfortunately, there's a new actuarial standard of practice called ASOP 6, which will increase the OPEB liability by about $10 million and increase the required contribution by about $1 million. And I want to note that that's currently not, that additional $1 million is currently not programmed into the budget. As far as maintenance and operation, I've listed a number of large increases to the MNO budget. I'm not going to recite each one of them, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding these increases. But I think most of them are self-explanatory. Seeing no questions, I'm going to move on.
How are we going to take care of that $1 million in the OPEB? Is that going to come back in a future year? We're going to do a million and a half over two years or something to get cut back up, or what?
I have a recommendation at the, towards the end of this presentation. Dave Webb has made several presentations regarding the capital improvement plan, and here's a summary of the total capital dollars that I expect to roll forward in 15-16. growth of 826,000. Also important to note that if you look at employee contributions relative to the normal cost of the pension program, employees are paying more than 55% of the cost, of the current cost of the pension program. And when we look at council's previous action to employ the fresh start, the city saves 129 million over 30 years, and it saves 47 million in today's, 47 million dollars in With regard to OPEB, the city is, OPEB is, is kind of the industry speak for retiring insurance obligations. The city is, is in much better shape than most cities. The legacy city plan was closed to new participants in 2006. And the new plan is, is funded by employer and employee contributions into a 401K-type account available only to pay healthcare costs. The employer contributions for each employee only range from between $800 to about $2,500 per employee per year. As far as the legacy plan, there are 691 participants eligible for the legacy benefit. 142 of those are currently employed by the city, and 549 are retired receiving these benefits. So the legacy plan has, still has an unfunded liability of $25 million, but it will be paid off in 13 years. Unfortunately, there's a new actuarial standard of practice called ASOP 6, which will increase the OPEB liability by about $10 million and increase the required contribution by about $1 million. And I want to note that that's currently not, that additional $1 million is currently not programmed into the budget. As far as maintenance and operation, I've listed a number of large increases to the M&amp;O budget. I'm not going to recite, recite each one of them, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding these increases. But I think most of them are self-explanatory. Seeing no questions, I'm going to move on.
How are we going to take care of that $1 million in the OPEB? Is that going to come back in a future year? We're going to do a million and a half over two years or something to get cut back up or what?
I have a recommendation at the, towards the end of this presentation. Dave Webb has made several presentations regarding the capital improvement plan, and here's a summary of the total capital dollars that I expect to roll forward in 15-16. So when we are develop, we were developing a budget strategy, we, we really thought hard about trying to keep a balanced approach. We've made a deliberate effort to balance our allocation of resources between current amenities, services, and, and debt repayment strategies. Now, while we want to pay our, our most expensive debt down as fast as possible, we, we also want to proceed in a deliberate manner. So we want to balance our needs, you know, with, with our residents today. So we suggest taking a balanced, moderate approach to debt repayment strategies that is both responsible and equitable between generations. So moving, moving forward, as we find ourselves with year-end and mid-year surpluses, we suggest taking a balanced approach towards providing both community benefits today as well as long-term stewardship efforts. Now, these are just two examples, but we thought the city might consider a neighborhood enhancement fund to provide for community prioritized enhancements. We know from the CIP presentation that CIP projects, there, there are a couple that await explicit funding, including West Coast Highway Landscaping, Peninsula Streetscapes, and the CDM Entryway Project. So, but, but I'd also recommend the city increase its contribution to the OPEB program to conform to the new OPEB standard. So the first checklist item provided today, now this is something, not something that you're going to vote on today, but we want to preview it, give you some time to think about it, and on the meeting on the 26th, council will have the opportunity to vote to add or make changes to the proposed budget. This first item has to do with the disposition of our expected fiscal year 14-15 year-end surplus. As you can see, we have approximately $2 million, if you can't read that. And we're recommending that perhaps 900,000 is, is dedicated to a, to a new neighborhood enhancement fund, and then about 900,000 be added to the retiree insurance fund for the OPEB liability. The next item on the checklist is, is a, is a revenue that, that wasn't included in, in the proposed budget, but we wanted to highlight this. Staff is proposing that we dedicate it to the Public Arts Fund, and we're, we're seeking council's explicit direction on this. The next checklist item has to do with personnel. These personnel adjustments were not included in the proposed budget and net to, to about a $20,000 savings. The next checklist item has to do with CIP additions. As noted, the CDM Entryway is, is, was something that, that some of the council members asked that we add this to the checklist. And this is, it also includes a project that we understand Public Works is not ready to kick off next year, and they've asked to, to remove it from the 15-16 budget. These savings unfortunately don't pave the way for the, for the Coronel Omar Entryway Project, which was expected to be funded with general fund proceeds. These other two are restricted revenue sources, including the Circulation Transportation Fund and Measure M. So-
Could you explain what those two projects are?
Well, the two, it's the same project. It's, it's the old Newport West Coast Highway modification. I would have to defer to Dave Webb or, or someone about what that project is, or why it was deferred.
Yes, that's the project that we're working at, right? Where Newport Boulevard and Coast Highway come over, and we're looking to put the third westbound lane in, into a transition lane and run the bike lane through. We're working with OCTA and grants on that project.
That's the one that goes down to 32nd Street where we just purchased the Blockbuster Building?
No, this is actually another OCTA project on Coast Highway at Newport Boulevard, right by A's. We're trying to get the third lane under the bridge and also-
Oh, okay. Why is it broken into two segments? I guess that's where I was getting confused on it.
Well, there's, there's different funding involved there, and as Dan alluded to, one's Measure M, I believe, and the other one is gas tax.
Circulation and transportation.
Stay down on the second part there, okay.
So why was it delayed?
I think it's just a workload, and I'd have to ask Mark on that. I'm sorry. Not as close to that one as I used to be.
Basically, we assumed that we would receive a grant this next fiscal year, but we've decided since we have not received the grant, we're not going to put it in the budget. So we will still apply for grant funding, and if we do receive grant funding, then we may come back and, and ask for an appropriation through the grant then.
So along with taking a balanced approach between, between programs and projects that provide benefit today and those that provide long-term benefit, we would also like council to consider the fiscal impact of new initiatives as they are brought to the table. Now, these are just a few examples, some ideas and considerations. But when we look at adding additional police presence on the peninsula, we, we think it's, there's a good opportunity and a good nexus to increase parking rates so, so that visitors that are likely participating in the need for the additional enforcement are helping to pay for the cost of the additional police enforcement. If we didn't do that action, the city would be making an explicit decision to 100% subsidize, for residents to subsidize the cost of this program. And we think by increasing parking rates, you're capturing some, some visiting dollars to pay for this effort. When you look at something like CDM Entryway Project, we, we've looked at the, the possibility of, of adding, adding paid parking along PCH. This is consistent with the Parking Management Plan done by Nelson Nygaard. It was one of their first long-term strategies. And when we look at other initiatives, either whether it be lowering mooring fees or commercial peers, we have to consider the ramification of that. Are we going to, to reduce CIPs? So there's always a, when developing a budget, there's always that trade-off and balance that we have to consider. So let's take a closer look. When we're talking about adding policing on the peninsula, it's four additional officers at approximate cost, including equipment and vehicles of about 800,000. And the funding proposal, as I said, was to raise parking rates. 90%, 98% of the parking spaces would increase between 0 and 25 cents per hour, and there are about 65 spaces that would increase 50 cents an hour after two hours. And that was a, an incentive period for, encourage people to turn over. Residents with annual passes would be less impacted, and this proposal is included in the budget. So moving forward, the, the unfunded lib, unfunded Coronel Omar Entryway Project, this is for discussion and has not been included in the, in the proposed budget. But adding, as I mentioned, adding paid parking to PCH between Avocado and Poppy is something that was included in the Parking Management Study. It's one of the few commercial areas that, that doesn't have paid parking. And it creates an ongoing funding source for both neighborhood enhancements, future parking strategies, and future bid recommendation. I think some residents may say, well, this is going to cause some, some additional residential spillover, but since there's already timed parking enforced on PCH, the residential spillover should be minimal. When we look at something like proposed mooring reduction or, or some of the other things affecting the Harbor Capital Fund, remember that the incremental rents were previously pledged, pledged to repay a $15.8 million loan that was used for dredging both Lower Bay, Ryan Channel, Linda Isle, and building the Marina and Marina Park. So when we talk about reducing those incremental rents, there's very little left that would be available to fund new projects. So I, while certain projects were, were asked to move forward in the CIP budget, if we make these decisions, we would also have to consider what projects might be at risk both in the current year or in future years if we did something like that. So just to recap the, the recent budget activity, on 4:30, the budget was delivered to both council, finance committee, public libraries, and it was posted online. Yesterday, we met with finance committee to review and discuss the budget. The budget was recommended to be moved forward for council review. Today, we're having a council study session, and you might be asking what's next. So on, on tonight's agenda, we'll be setting the, the date for the public hearing on budget adoption. On 5/26, we will have the public hearing, and you'll be able to vote on those checklist items and approve the GAN limit. And then July 1, the fiscal year begins. With that, I'll, I'll open up to any questions or comments, or unless the city manager has any closing remarks.
Yeah, Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, Dan, I want to come back to that, the OPEB question, starting maybe on your slide 26. And I'm, I'm the dim bulb up here, so let's go through this slowly. The, the, the original annuity program was terminated or closed to participants in 2006. So there's a finite pool of people who are enjoying that benefit right now, and the thought is, is that that will diminish, that will, that pool will get smaller. Yet, the, and the unfunded obligation within that pool is 25 million?
Correct.
So everybody who, subsequent to 2006, is now in this 401K or an HRA type of a program. The 25 million is the unfunded for that OPEB annuity program.
Correct.
What is driving a $10 million shift in that one program, and why can't that be amortized over the same period?
It can be, it's just not built into that rate. The-
That's a one-third increase.
Yes, and, and ASOP 6, or the Actuarial Standard of Practice, if you recall, has, has to do with a very obtuse measurement of the implied subsidy associated with active participants, the active employees subsidizing the cost of retirees participating in the plan. So the actuaries have, have said, you should be setting aside for that because we know cities will, will continue to do so. So you should, during the active employment, I'll use myself as an, as an example, before Dan retires, you should set some money aside so that you can continue to pay for that implied subsidy.
But Dan isn't going to be in the pool.
Dan won't be in, in the pool, however, there's, there, it's assumed that I will continue to receive as a retiree a reduced premium by being able to participate in a, a pool of participants that include both younger employees and retired folks. So retirees have a smaller premium.
I, I just have to accept the fact that this is our new nut, is, right? There's, there's no, there's no disputing this, there's no suggesting that this doesn't apply to us or anything, this is just our new nut.
There was a time where there was a difference between, a difference of opinion between the retirees and the accountants. The accountant said, well, we'll follow whatever the, the actuaries decide, and the actuaries have decided, and so we could choose not to fund it. There's no requirement to fund it, but then we would, it would appear that we were short funding our liability to the rest of the world.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Okay, any other questions before we open it? Mayor Protim Dixon.
Yes, Dan, thank you. A couple of questions. If you would go to your slide 21, please, just kind of the pie, that is the pie chart on the general fund expenditures. So if I'm looking at this correctly, salaries and benefits, like in any organization, take up the lion's share of, of the spending. The next item, maintenance and operation, $53 million. And capital improvement, let me just skip over to capital improvement. We've been going through that as a council for the last several weeks, and so I think there's a thorough understanding of every single element that has been vetted and very constructively, and transfers just a financial mechanism. I'm really focusing on maintenance and operation where I feel that I at least don't have the visibility in, and you've heard me say this, and this is not a new thought to you, the programs, the many fine programs that you mentioned at the, your beginning slide of, that make up the quality of life of Newport Beach. I think certainly the benefit of the doubt is that they're important, they're beneficial, the community demands them, to use your word. I would just like to have more visibility. Now, I mean, others may not feel the same way, but to know, I know the staff works hard, and under Dave's leadership, there's the challenges. Is it working? Is it effective? Should we still do it? And I know that is going on at the staff level. I'd like to have some way to have visibility on that, just so I know what it is that we do for a number of years and then we no longer do because their demand is not there. I just want to see that ebb and flow of program spending because it's $53 million or some portion of $53 million.
So I, I think if you're interested in that, I know that our, if, if you wanted to pick a department or two just to start with, I know they would be delighted to share that with you and the council. And you're right, you and I have talked about this previously. So, and additionally, something that would elucidate the, the maintenance and operations side, so remember too, that's where all of our contracts are. So the trash contract is in there, and that's $4 million. The tree trimming contract is in there. Every big, every big and little contract is in that, that M&amp;O line item. So I think it'll be, it'd be helpful to you to, to see a list of all those contracts. In fact, one of the finance committee members asked for that, and we can pull that together. Our, our new system will be much better in pulling that together faster. But in the meantime, if you wanted to learn, if you wanted to kind of pick a department or two, I'd be happy to at the next meeting, if that's what the council wished, to kind of go through how they build their budget and pick their programs. I know you don't want to hear that from everybody, but maybe one or two would help everybody understand that better.
Well, I appreciate that, and maybe the other members may or may not want to do it if there's a way that, as, to the finance committee or as a part of that, since I'm a member of that, I would like to have visibility on that and just to know where all the money is going. One other point, new subject, for many, last, recent history, Dave, you've been working hard with the council, prior councils, where we've outsourced and contracted out services. As we all know, police helicopters, street sweeping, beach, trash collection, parking lots, parking meters, residential trash collection, and more. And I'll give you credit, certainly in the prior council, we've gone from 833 full-time personnel to 727 in the current year. I would like to know that we're continuing to go through this rigorous process of scrutiny of spending and where we can look at it, where can we still look to, are there still some low-hanging fruit or medium-hanging fruit? Are we looking under every rock? I know that's hard and challenging, and I'd like to do it in the least painful way to look at this, and maybe it's just through attrition that we work through the, the process. But is this something that you could come back to and report on areas where we might look that we, that you may have on your bucket list of where we should be looking and that we haven't addressed at this point? Are there those areas?
Certainly. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, yes.
Do they exist? Okay, thank you. At the next meeting, perhaps, during the budget discussion, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Petros.
Yeah, and to that end, Dave, I think when you and I last spoke, it was my observation that the revenue side of this budget is up 6%, 6.01%. And yet, the spending side was only up about a point and a half, 1.5%. So to the notion that we are overspending, or spending beyond our means, or not being diligent in our stewardship, isn't the case based on the budget that's presented. In fact, we are applying our resources wisely to debt reduction, to capital projects, to many other things, and are not spending every penny we have that's borne out by this budget.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll open it up for the public to speak. Come forward and state your name.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to say that I was very pleased to see the newly constituted finance committee review the budget last night. Although I think it's unrealistic to expect that the four new citizen members are going to have much impact until next year's budget, I do think they contributed a lot to the discussion and asked many pertinent questions about both the budget's assumptions and the details within it. Regarding those details, at your study session on the capital improvement program portion of the budget, I praised the staff on the clarity with which that part of the budget lays out what programs have been approved and when. Tagging partly on what Mayor Protem Dixon just said, I would like to point out that with regard to the details of the remainder of the budget, and it must be apparent, you have heard almost nothing about those details in today's overview, they are no less significant because our city charter, under that, staff without coming back to you is restricted in the coming year to spending just what you approve in this budget, and in fact, spending it on, in the words of the charter, the respective objects and purposes therein named. Although Newport Beach falls short of many other cities in letting the public know what a specific employee or council member by name is paid, I will admit that the operating budget is pretty clear about disclosing how many in-house employees you are approving and for what purposes and costs. But where it falls very short is identifying those objects and purposes for which many of the other line items have been approved, including, for example, how many outsourced employees and operations you will be approving and for what. Even if the public and you saw the city's warrant list of checks paid each month, which for reasons unknown to me, we do not see, could we tell if those expenditures were actually the ones authorized in this budget? Can we tell if this budget, in this budget, are you approving the expenditure by Department Y of X dollars for a lobbyist in Washington? I cannot tell that. Can I tell if Department Y is asking you to approve spending X dollars to send an employee to a trade show in Las Vegas or Poughkeepsie? I cannot. Can I tell if you approve this budget, you will be authorizing staff to send a check for $40,000 of taxpayer money to each of two merchants associations we have in the city? I cannot. Yet, under our charter, the answer is those questions and questions like that should be just as transparent as the details of the capital improvement budget. If it is not, I think we have a problem that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Gary Pickett. I am here on behalf of Ardell Yacht and Shipbrokers, as well as a majority of the commercial marina operators here in Newport Beach. I'm asking that the tidlins fee increase for commercial marinas be looked at again. In 2012, under contentious circumstances, by a vote of four to three, the tidlins fee was changed to increase it by five to six times of what we are presently paying. No one disputes that the fee should not be increased, but to base this increase of five to six times on two appraisals that were greatly flawed is something that the city should rectify. The irony of all ironies is that commercial marinas, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, paid in $265,000 of tidlins fees. As compared to mooring fees, which was nearly $1.7 million, we are a drop in the bucket to the total tidlins fee revenue of nearly $16 million. We represent less than 1.6%. So any change to this proposed resolution is not going to put a big dent into any proposed budgets. The other irony is that there's tremendous talk in 2012 about the city being possibly guilty of gifting the tidlins to the commercial operators, and that the state would take away this privilege of being the fiduciary for the tidlins from the city. Oddly enough, if you Google it long enough, you will find on the State Lands Commission website a memo that indicates guidance for all State Lands Commission employees to negotiate guidance as to what rate should be charged per square foot. And in this memo in 2011, they indicate that they should be using a .33 per square foot charge for commercial tidlins leases. So I ask that the city put this topic back on the agenda and that we revisit this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Council, Denise Oberman, resident. I would, along with the city council, also, the public would appreciate a copy of the detail on the operations and maintenance O and M budget. I do think it is a material portion of the budget, and it would be useful to see it. I would also ask that the public be able to avail itself of this presentation. The material that was passed out doesn't provide the detail even that was presented here. I have just a couple of questions, and I'll raise the other ones later. Relative to the general fund revenue chart and the allocations, it would be helpful to know what is contained in the all other sources of revenue. The 37% of total revenues certainly is a material number. So what's in there, and is there something in there that suggests direction for public policy for the council? I'd like to know what the assumptions are regarding planned development that are underlying the TOT tax, and are there any other assumptions that are changing vis-à-vis sales tax and other ancillary or secondary or tertiary forms of revenue that would be associated with any types of development that's being planned or contemplated? And I think that's something that would be useful to look at for the council and the city going into the future. My last question for this afternoon was really a request for clarification with regard to the police officers and some of the balanced thinking. There were initially five additions to the police force in the staffing plan, excuse me, and then there was some comment on the offset of potential police officers with increase in parking rates and some other elements. And the comment was made that this is in the budget. Is it in the budget, or isn't it in the budget? I'm confused.
We did propose, if the council adopts the proposed budget, that the officers are in there, as is a parking rate increase. Actually, it's the revenue for it. The council would have to go through and hold a public hearing in advance of adjusting the rates there.
Okay, and where would one find that if one was to review the budget?
You would look in the sources of revenue, and by the way, I'm taking notes, and I'm thinking maybe we could do, put something interactive on the website that would say what questions were asked and where to find that, including all sources of funds, that's in the budget detail.
Just a detailed schedule.
So we'd be able to show you where parking revenue is proposed to be increased by that amount.
Okay, all right. I think, you know, we have simple but inquiring minds, and I'm confident that the staff was very diligent in its work above the budget. So whatever the supporting detail is, the various categories, if you just display that, I don't think you have to, I appreciate that, Dave, but I don't think it's necessary to build some complex, interactive thing. Just exhibit the detail for the council and the public to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is the proposed budget on the website right now?
It is.
Yes, okay, so people can get all the details.
The city's website, then backslash budget.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Bernie Suallstad, Mr. Mayor from the Corona del Mar Business Improvement District. I just want to assure or keep the staff assured, hopefully, that the council's opinion that we have our entryway project in the budget. So it just appears that it's there, I'm not sure, but anyway, just need to keep pushing on that request.
This is a clarification for Bernie. The entryway project amount is in the checklist, which the long-term council members will know how we use that. The council adopts the proposed budget and then adopts the checklist, which is an amendment to the proposed budget as it's all adopted, because obviously, things come up in your discussion and in the public's discussion, different from the proposed budget. So we've put the CDM entryway project on the checklist. If you approve the checklist, you would approve that project.
So just to be clear, though, the way the budget's structured right now, that unless we found another project to cut in the budget, we'd have to increase the parking meters in Corona del Mar to fund it? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. We wanted you to, in the community, at least, kind of think about those things. You could say, for instance, that the Corona del Mar entryway is now the number one project with the Neighborhood Enhancement Fund, and that would take that 400, remember, it's about a $900,000 amount. You could take 400 of that off the top and pay for that CDM entryway. You'd leave $500,000 for the remaining projects.
Okay. And we'll see all that in the checklist with the
That's right.
With the potential revenue and then the number of projects, which presumably are going to exceed the revenue, so we're going to have to make some choices there.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other speakers? Come forward, please.
Good afternoon, members of council, city staff. My name is Laura Curran, I live in Corona del Mar, and I'd like to comment on some points that were not covered. First of all, there is a line item for litigation, but it is a one-timely line item, so it would be worthwhile to look back in the detail and see if we have ongoing litigation expense and a budget for that. Second, I'd like to see some detail related to a quality-of-life issue which has impacted the residents for many years, and that would be group homes and advocating with the state for changing group home legislation, because while the city has spent significantly for maintenance of that issue in West Newport and the peninsula, there are still facilities in Corona del Mar that continue to impact our neighborhoods, and in fact, they are currently expanding. And so, third, an important area, an audit performance process and an internal audit process. There is no item in the budget for that, but if we go forward with an internal audit and we discover that changes need to be made, and I've actually looked at the current policy, it's one page, it doesn't call for any performance audit process, we're going to need to develop a process, probably engage a firm to do that with us, and to train all of our staff. And that is an ongoing activity. It will involve change and culture review, and so it needs to be budgeted. Finally, for the maintenance medians, to Ms. Dixon's point, we have a $1.5 million budget, but we are also in an environment where we're looking at what do we currently plant and what does it require to maintain those items? So if you read about St. Michael and All Angels, they're taking out their turf, and Shane Burkle has been helping them recast their entire area, so it will first be more productive from a natural standpoint, habitat standpoint, but also use less water. So if we're budgeting $1.5 million for medians and $400,000 for planting in Corona del Mar, are we actually budgeting maintenance for the right things? Should we be replacing some of those medians, as we have done in many locations, with planting material which is more productive from a habitat standpoint, more beautiful, and requires less maintenance? So those are some of the items that we'd ask you to consider as we go forward in the process and as we have an opportunity as residents to see the details, so we can understand what is present. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to councils, or any further questions or comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers, miss limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any public comments on non-agenda or closed-session items?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to comment on two items that were discussed at previous closed sessions. At your last one, there was an item the public saw entitled "City of Newport Beach versus the Orange County Register." This was a case about the city trying to suppress and punish the publication of a potentially embarrassing article regarding allegations of criminal misconduct by a city employee. At the end of that session, the city attorney said that there was no reportable actions were taken. Yet, the next morning, the Orange County Register reported, and court records confirm that the city dropped the case. I will admit that the Brown Act is less than clear about what has to be reported and when, but in a city that prides itself on transparency, if the city attorney asked for your direction and you gave it, shouldn't the citizens of Newport Beach be the first to know rather than the last? And shouldn't we know who voted for and against it? Next, I want to go back to the meeting that, according to that story, is the one that generated the lawsuit the city sought to suppress. That was on March 17, when the city saw an announcement saying, nothing more than you were going to meet to consider anticipated litigation and the initiation of litigation. Aside from the secrecy, which I abhor, I have at least two problems with this. First, closed sessions are supposed to be used very sparingly and for nothing beyond the few purposes allowed. To a non-lawyer, it now seems that the city was not planning to initiate litigation against its employee, but rather to refer complaints to the district eternally and to the FPPC, who would then decide whether they even wanted to investigate them. Second, until I came across a recent publication on city attorney ethics, on which our own city attorney is listed as a co-author, I did not realize how problematic even talking to the city council about initiating litigation might be. I am not a lawyer, but as I read it, it says that many employee matters, in those, the city attorney's client is not the city council, but rather the city manager, and that when prosecutions are being considered, the city attorney actually represents none of you, but rather the people. Quoting from that manual, "The city attorney needs to clearly warn the council, city manager, chief of police, and other interested officials that they must not try to influence the city attorney's exercise of his prosecutorial powers, including whether to file criminal complaints in special cases. In short, taking a vote on initiating litigation can create the impression that cases are being pursued as a result of political pressure rather than an objective violation of the law." law. Much as I would like you, my elected officials, to look over all aspects of our city, I would suggest that the conversation that generated the story should perhaps never have taken place. Thank you."
Thank you. Did you want to comment on any of that, Mr. Harp?
Well, I can't comment on what we discussed in closed session, but I can assure the public that we fully complied with the Brown Act and that the meeting was appropriate and that there were no violations thereof.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Mr. Harp, do you have any announcements for the closed session items?
I do. This evening, we'll be adjourning to closed session to discuss labor negotiations with the city's designated representatives, which include Dave Kiff, city manager, and Terry Cassidy, the deputy city manager, with all unrepresented employees, as well as two items of existing litigation, including the case of Morales versus City of Newport Beach, and Friends of the Fire Rings versus South Coast Air Quality Management District and the City of Newport Beach, as well as one matter of anticipated litigation. Thank you.